At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Present.
Commissioner Bodak?
Here.
Commissioner Dulles-Fort?
Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Here.
Chairwoman Palmieri-Muddad?
Here.
Let the record reflect, you have eight Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love her charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes added table 10, chapter 4, section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
May I have a motion to approve the communications?
Still moved, not in chair.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and was seconded by Commissioner Baker. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye, with exception November 1st.
Except for November?
November 1st, special meeting.
We're on communications.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Communications, yeah.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
Chairwoman Palmieri-Muddad?
Aye.
Chair, let the record reflect, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all the communications.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October Agenda Setting meetings and regular meetings and the November special meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Kowalski and was seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
I will have to abstain from the October 9th regular and agenda meeting as well as the November 1st special meeting.
And you approve October 23rd, correct?
Oh, yes.
Understood. Commissioner Bodak?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye, de exception November 1st, special meeting.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye to all.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye to all.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye to all.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Muddad?
Aye to all.
Let the record reflect, you have seven votes in the affirmative with one abstention for the October 9th Agenda and Regular Meeting minutes. Sorry, eight votes in the affirmative for the October 23rd Agenda and Regular Meeting minutes, and you have seven votes, I'm sorry, six votes in the affirmative with two abstentions for the November 1st special meeting.
Thank you. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Hi, can you hear me? Diana Gonzalez, Clark, New Jersey. Today I want to start with a moment of recognition and gratitude. Oh, sorry, my notes got jumbled. Okay. I would say in the past six or seven months that we've been coming here, I got an appreciation of the programs that the county runs that I wasn't aware of before. Like today's artwork with the seniors, that was neat. I saw the young kids that performed, you know, with the theater. So, I think you guys do a great job. Specifically, you know, as it pertains to Clark, since we started coming here, we raised concerns about Esposito Park. I want to thank Vicki Durbin Drake. She had the Crestone Walkway addressed, it was repaired. And also, I brought to her attention some garbage that got cleaned up. And when it came to the reservoir, we had a whole list of requests, right? And you've been very cooperative and responsive. There's that one last issue, which is the Wendell Boat Ramp. I understand that the NJTA is holding Union County fully and entirely responsible for the Parkway Bridge in Clark, not just the underneath passage, but the entire structure above and below. The county is willing to eliminate the second boat launch, but you're not because of the NJTA's position. You know, as we digested this as residents, we feel that if an accident occurs, Clark, the county, the NJTA are all subject to get sued. And it's really not even clear if having the two boat ramps is acceptable to the NJTA. Seems like you guys are at an impasse right now. The residents of the Wendell community don't want to have pass-through traffic, and some of the largest old-growth tree canopies actually in that section of the reservoir, it would be destroyed for the parking lot and the boat launch. I could enumerate all the risks, but you guys have heard it from us before, so I'll spare you. We do feel like having the boat ramp at Boat Lakes is actually going to make the county more liable because it's going to invite boaters to zigzag under the bridge. So, we don't really feel like it reduces your liability. Our position and our ask at this time is, if the liability is too big for the county to take on, we feel like it's too big for the Union County taxpayers to take on. And there should be no boating permitted at this moment. We feel like we need to allow more time for the NJTA and the accountability to work out liability-sharing negotiations. I understand you need to get plans approved through the DEP, and so for that reason, you might need to keep it in, you know, until you work through that. But we are pleading that you not move forward with the actual removal of the trees and the installation of the boat ramp until more time is given to this effort. Residents are petitioning the NJTA, we're writing letters, and we're going to their meetings. Our mayor has also written a letter petitioning them to enter into negotiations with the county. It took many, many months to get Nick Skatari's attention on the matter. I was fortunate that he gave me some time back in, I guess, October timeframe. Of course, I reached out to him again. Haven't heard back from his office as of yet. And maybe this is an unusual request, but, you know, he is probably one of the more influential senators in the state, you know, he can serve as acting governor when the governor is out. It may not be part of your usual protocol to reach out to the senator, but given that he's heard from all of his constituents, I'm wondering if we could escalate it to that level to really kind of get these two state organizations to really talk to each other, to come to the table. So, in conclusion, we think boating is not a good idea at this time until liability can be addressed. Best case, the NJTA and the county come up with some kind of a use agreement. Maybe we end up somewhere like boating concentrated in the Center Lake, only with duck boats and some buoys. I don't know where it's going to land, but we feel like this needs more time. And the last thing I'll mention that a resident brought up, you may have heard it in several meetings, it could have been in the town meetings or the planning meetings. Many years ago, a resident, I believe as a father and a child, passed away at the reservoir. So, residents thought it might be a nice gesture if we get to the point of installing the boat.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. I am Amory Howarth from Middlesex County. I am a former RN of Cornerstone Behavioral Health Hospital, which you terminated. I remain the Union President of Local 5112 until my duties are rectified and complete. I've come before you many times and continue to plead for resolution. You heard me speak out for the four professionals who joined our union asking for their 1% extra pay so that they would have the same as the nurses on our contract, but you denied that. You heard me beg for the preservation of negotiations for our jobs, what we were being lied to constantly for eight months this past year, from January until the time that we got our layoff notices, but still denied. You heard me tell you what it was like when we worked for you during COVID, begged for monies and begged for the monies from the federal government that was given out to the healthcare workers confronted with the pain and the horrors of working during that time, but still denied. But I think that was around the same time that raises, bonuses, and stipends were given out. You heard me tell you about the leftover COVID-19 funds reported in the ledger, but still you heard me say how we worked for you and just wanted to be acknowledged during that time period, but still were denied. You heard me say how Burlington and Camden Counties were filing for legislature to provide bonuses for certain essential healthcare workers during the vested period of COVID, and asked you, "What about Union County?", but still denied. Instead, we heard at that time that the county was being investigated for the extra bonuses and stipends over $400,000 to top officials as we, at Cornerstone, got our layoff notices. You heard me tell you how we complained about being wrongfully paid per our contracted for our holiday pay. Over and over again, I said it at the Labor Management Meeting throughout this year, and previous presidents said that before. And it wasn't until we were laid off that $60,000 had to be paid out to us nurses per that contract. I am asking you to look at the 80 employees who you deemed are no longer essential workers for Union County, but they were essential workers during the time of crisis. To be given something, something to acknowledge that they mattered, that we mattered. Eighty times $5,000 is $400,000. But you gave that to three people. Out of those 80, it was only 18 nurses, 37 institutional aides, three social workers, and one recreational therapist. Fifty-six employees times $5,000 is $280,000. Times $4,000 is $224,000. Times $3,000, that I said that the other counties were giving to the people whose base pay was less than $100,000, is only $168,000. Significantly under half of the $400,000 that those three top officials got. All I'm saying is, what are we worth? We're no longer part of you. What are we worth? What were we worth during that time? That's all I'm saying. Don't we deserve acknowledgement for the job that we did? Thank you for your time.
Gregory Johnson, Roselle Park. How you guys doing, Commissioner, Chair? The reason why I'm here today is I'm advocating for veteran organizations. I'm a Navy veteran myself, I'm also a past commander of post 60. And since my endeavor and since my journey, going to a lot of these meetings, I've been listening to the veterans' concerns about being unable to obtain grant monies. So, there's a lot of money out there for different veteran organizations. However, they aren't... Many veteran organizations face a challenge in accessing these grant opportunities due to the complexities of the application process and the costs associated with it, and even trying to get a professional grant writer. So, I came up with a proposal, and I sent it just recently to the Veterans Advisory Board, and I just wanted to plant that seed to you guys to hopefully maybe you guys can consider it next year's budget or something along that lines that will help veterans obtain these revenues. So, this way that a lot of these organizations can do things like, and continue to be important with community engagement. Like, we have the Boy Scouts of America as a part of us. We do a lot of functions for the community. And so, it makes it difficult when you're trying to obtain, let's just say, a $5,000 grant, and you have to spend $4,000 to get $1,000. So, I thought about an initiative, I sent it to the Advisory Board. I would like them to sit and work out the little idiosyncrasies that may need to be tweaked. Of course, it comes along with safeguards so that, you know, people aren't mismanaging or trying to obtain these funds or whatever. So, I'm just here today just wanting to plant that seed and to you guys to consider that in next year's budget, and hopefully we will discuss it at the next Veterans Advisory Board meeting. And I look forward to everyone's input. So, thank you for your time, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Commissioner Mirabella, for allowing me to sit on the board, and I'm looking forward to doing such a great initiative like this. Hopefully, this will help veteran organizations get the monies that they need rather than it always be denied. So, thank you.
Hello, Chairwoman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Susanna Savelli of Clark, New Jersey. Thank you for letting me speak up here, and thank you for helping, continuously helping our Union County residents to improve everybody's lives, for its residents, and especially in your effort to help improve the reservoirs. Our reservoir, as you all know, has been suffering from lack of care for quite a few years, and swamps, green slimes have been showing up constantly, and we really appreciate your effort of trying to improve it. And as constituents, we really appreciate you, elected government officials like you guys, to make common sense decisions and to do it with transparency. We were recently fortunate enough to attend a planning board meeting in Clark where CME presented some of the projects with the planning board. We were surprised to hear some of the things that has changed from the original scope that we weren't aware of. Not that we supposedly know about it, but that was a good way for us to know about it. And I have some questions, and I'm not sure how to get the answers at this point, but I thought I'd at least throw the questions out and hopefully get some response. One is, we were, you know, the primary goal of this project was to clean up the reservoir with dredging and erations. But we were very surprised to hear that the East Lake was not to be dredged or aerated anymore at this point. And our understanding from that meeting was that it was due to budget constraints, even though the original, I guess, the funding that was supposedly assigned to this whole project was $43 million, is what we heard. But there's still budget constraints to do the East Lake at this point, which I can understand, you know, everything goes up, as we all know. So, maybe there has to be some limitations of what we can do with the original funding. However, we're just really surprised that if the primary goal of dredging and eration for a whole lake is not done because of budget constraints, I'm not sure why we are going forward with building all these extra things if the original goal of cleaning up the reservoir cannot be achieved. So, that was one of my questions. Some of the other questions are, I think it has been brought up before. CME also told us during this planning board meeting that the boats are going to be allowed to kayaks and rowboats, canoes, only. And I think you've been told by people who actually do those kind of boatings that boat ramps are not needed for those kind of boats. So, I'm not sure why we are still in a project building boat ramps, and there's two of them at this point. You know, one at the main boat ramp at St. Agnes Church and the other one in Wendell Place. Also, this is supposed to be a three-month operations, boat rentals, Memorial Day to September, Labor Day. When we also heard that during that planning board meeting that there's a two-story, 8,600-square-foot building to be built for a three-month operation. Two stories, 8,600-square-foot building just seems to be excessive, you know. But we don't know everything, so I would like to understand why, especially when there's budget constraints that cannot even do the basic goal of dredging and erations. The second point I really wanted to make, and Diana has already mentioned a little bit of it, is on the liability side. As she mentioned, the New Jersey Turnpike liabilities that's imposed right now is unbearable by Union County. And I know you guys have been trying to work out the situation to be fair to everybody. But if it's not worked out, the idea of a signage to try and stop people from zigzagging, especially with two boat ramps, just doesn't seem to be a common sense idea that's going to be able to withstand any litigations. So, you know, that's one of the first liabilities I can see, that boating at all seems to be not reasonable given those kind of liability. The second one that I wanted to bring it up, and I'm not even sure all the Commissioners or Chairwoman yourself are aware of. At the eastern end of East Lake, there's a waterfall. At the meeting, CME stated that...
Thank you.
My name is Henry Savelli, and I'm married to Susanna Savelli. And I'm from Clark. Just want to finish up what Susanna got cut off by saying. The engineer at the Clark Planning Board meeting, you know, we were asked about the danger of that waterfall at the end on the east. That's significant waterfall. And I asked, if someone goes too close to it, is there anything in the plan that could stop them from going over and getting hurt or dying or drowning, what have you? He said something about some boys that would be put there, but he said they would not prevent a boat from going over the waterfall. They would discourage it, but not prevent it. So, apparently, there's no way to guarantee that a, you know, a young family or a person with a couple of kids and the thing. You know, when the breeze is blowing briskly, it's kind of hard to keep that rowboat, because I've had some experience myself, under control. And it blows you toward the waterfall. So, I could see you trying to paddle back away from the waterfall and the wind stopping you from, and there's no way to stop the boat. And there's no way to stop the boat, so you're going to go over the waterfall. It sounded like a really big deal, and your engineer did not have an answer for that. And he admitted that that was something, "Oh, well, yeah, no, it won't stop it, but, you know, we have signs, we have these boys." But it's a concern, and along with the liability issue, frankly, this is a... No one's really thought about this much, but unlike a lot of other parks where you have boating, what have you, very few, if any, have waterfalls at the end of it. You shouldn't be allowed on East Lake because there's a waterfall there. And maybe you shouldn't be allowed there at all with boats. You should restrict them to the other side, the West Lake, if you will, for boating, where you don't have that kind of a potential danger. So, I just wanted to bring that, make that clear, that this is an issue that never came up before. At the planning board meeting, your engineer admitted, he admitted. And if there is a liability, sue on this someday, those minutes of that admission will come out. So, that's something I would be very concerned about. So, I think you either got to fix that issue from an engineering or practical standpoint, or, like we're saying, don't do, don't allow boating for a while until all these liability issues have been hammered out, you know, to everyone's satisfaction. Okay? With that, I thank you for the time.
Good evening. Ellen Mulligan from Clark, New Jersey. I'm going to thank you for giving us an opportunity to comment and provide feedback regarding the Clark Reservoir. I attended the Clark Planning Board meeting on 11/8, and I had several questions looking at the original plans versus the revised plans. My questions were not addressed or answered. Some of my questions are, we noticed some of the walking trails were changed to gravel, and is that ADA compliant? The improvements were not shown to scale, and it's very deceiving if you look at it. For instance, the boathouse, 8,600 square feet shows up as like a little, minute little square. I would like to look at plans for the boathouse. It seems very excessive for 8,600 square feet. You have a second floor with a gas fireplace, a covered patio, offices, and a big great room. Are you having employees there? Do you need more parking? Are you going to open that up for catering hall? The same thing with the parking lots. It doesn't mention how many parking spots will be in either the, by the St. Agnes property or by the Wendell Place Boat Ramp. They talked about the boathouse will house an emergency vehicle. What kind of emergency vehicle is that, and is that in the budget? There's also a 30-foot buffer along the St. Agnes property and a 50-foot buffer at Genesee Drive. How come one is 30 and one is 50? Do you have a count of trees to be removed, and what sizes are the trees? The press release dated 8/26 states there will be duck boats in addition to kayaks and canoes. What do you consider a duck boat? Do you consider it a touristy boat or a hunting duck boat? There's two connection paths off of Madison Hill Road. One appears to be asphalt, and one is aggregate. Why are you having two different footpaths, different materials? The pedestrian bridge along the Parkway, how wide will it be? And will it handle motorized vehicles in case of emergencies? I'm asking you to please reconsider the Wendell Place Boat Ramp. We don't feel it's necessary, and there's a great liability. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm sorry, we have to move on to the next. Thank you.
Hello, Nancy Twaskis, Clark, New Jersey. And I'm here to talk about the Clark Reservoir Park project that is going to cost $43 million. And I think about $30 million of that is COVID money. That came, I guess, from the state via federal, so I just want to emphasize that. We're spending COVID money on a park that really nobody wants in Clark. I don't know, I don't see anybody here getting up and saying they want it. I'm still waiting to hear. So, first, I'd like to show my support for the Wendell Place residents who are going to have their lives changed forever, but not for the better. This change is not being forced on them by foreign enemies, no. It is being forced on them by a group of elected officials who appear to not care that they are ruining lives. Why? Because there is an obsession with boating on the Clark Reservoir. Second, I would like to speak to the overall plan with boating on the Clark Reservoir. When you walk on the paths around the reservoir now, there are no boating signs posted all over the place. How does a reservoir go from no boating to Lake a pack on? It is the county's obsession with boating on the Clark Reservoir. Third, I would like to speak to the liability the county is placing on the pocketbooks of all the citizens in the county. Many citizens have brought this up at local and county meetings and has fallen on deaf ears. Now, the state is addressing the liability through the New Jersey Turnpike Ath... Whether the state or the county has to pay for damages caused by boating on the reservoir, it is still a cost to citizens that is totally unnecessary. The dream of having 365,000 residents of Union County boating alongside one of the most congested sections of the Garden State Parkway is looking like a nightmare. I can picture it now, drivers going 65 miles an hour and being distracted by kayaks, canoes,
Delia Collins, Clark, New Jersey.
rowboats, paddle boats, emergency rescue missions, drownings, who knows what?
I have a few issues. One of them will be brought up about the Clark Reservoir, but I have two other issues.
And why? Because the county is obsessed with boating on the Clark Reservoir.
I was very disturbed when I read that the, beyond the bin day at Union College on November
I suggest boat ramps, boat docks, a two-story 8,600-foot boathouse with a party room, go
the 2nd, the, they were going to be collecting things for the animals, and they were going
by the way of the ill-conceived train and carousel and clock tower.
to be going to St. Hubert's, which is in Madison, which is not in Union County.
Then the need for two massive parking lots where trailers can turn around gets eliminated,
They don't service Union County.
and maybe the money-grabbing stormwater retention basin gets eliminated, and we get to some
They've eliminated any of their animal control for any municipality within our county.
low-maintenance nature trails and a fishing pier.
They bring in pets and animals by plane, and they fly them in, and they get adopted.
Let's be reminded that in a democracy, elected officials are there to implement what the people want, and the people don't want all that tree destruction and development.
Why are animals die in our Union County service animal control?
Why is it that we, the people, are feeling like we have no control of our destiny?
Union County Police use Norcumane as their animal control.
Please, it's time to start listening to the people.
How come they didn't give to animal control in your own city also of Elizabeth that is
Thank you.
overrun with animals? There is also an animal control, I'm sorry, there is also the animal control in Elizabeth, Plainfield, Union, Woodbridge, they all handle the towns in Union County. Animal, I'm sorry, Associated Humane also supplies animal control to Clark, Linden, Raway, Roseville, and Winfield, along with our Union County Police. How come you had to go to St. Hubert's in Madison? That doesn't help any animal in our county. Let's take care of the Union County animals first and foremost, and save their lives. Thank you. Okay. Back in 2018, you passed a resolution by Chairman Sergio Granados, concurring with the Essex County Resolution, supporting municipalities and permitting trap, neuter, and return, commonly known as TNR. Since that time, only four towns in Union County have adopted TNR, and we're still on the hedge about Raway. Out of 21 towns that we have, only four of them have TNR. Hopefully, in the 2020, I'm sorry, in 2025, you'll find money to supplement some of the people and the individuals, myself also, that pay for TNR for animals in our towns that are dying. There are animal control people that go out and tell people, let the animals die. Don't feed them, don't take care of them, let them die in our towns. Sorry, I get emotional when it comes to the animals, and Mr. Maribella knows me from the bear hunts, the deer hunts, the gare geasing, gassing of the geese that our county did many years ago. So I'm very emotional about this, and I feel that our county has let our animals down. Okay, regarding Clark, got my shirt on. I am very upset that there is going to be no dredging. We have photographs of some of the areas of Clark that have been, I can't even imagine living next to something like this and smelling this and having the aquatic life be killed because they can't breathe. If you go, I've brought this up many times, if you go down Old Raritan Road and you go by the former Hungarian Club, it is like plaster over the water. It is green, it is not moving. And it also is, at the end of the headwaters, a lot of that water that comes in the headwaters area comes from other towns. We don't want to become North Carolina or Tennessee and get flooded out. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board and Bar's Golden Nuggets, Bruce Patterson, 325 Barwood, New Jersey. Sorry for the address. REZO 853 through 866 is modifying the budget, pouring in nearly $14 million. I'm not questioning the content of the REZOs. Why is this money now coming into the budget so late in the year? Were we expending this upfront in the hopes that we would receive the $14 million later? REZO 865 is expending $3.5 million toward a Green Lane Park improvement. Nothing came up on the Google Maps for Green Lane Park, although we see Union has a 40-acre Kennedy Reservation off Conant Avenue nearby. Is this the same park? REZO 869 is approving issuance of solid waste bonds called Ares Linden Project. Odd that the county would ignore tagging the cost of this bond at $30 million. Back in June 2019 Freeholder Meeting, then-UCIA Director Sullivan stated that the project would not be funded by the county, hence no impact on taxpayers. But it looks like the county is now on the hook for a total of $95 million in bonding, and I'll talk more about this at the end. REZO 870 is allowing the UCI to undertake issuance of lease purchase obligations for capital equipment of various towns. As the public is unfamiliar with this process, the public would like clarification of how this interfaces with the towns and exactly what equipment is planned to be bought. REZO 875 has upped Kingston Coventry's legal contract to $170,000 for general council services. Why is there more money being spent for the public's interest? What more general council services are occurring? REZO 878 is applying for a $2 million grant from New Jersey's DCA for unspecified operating expenses. Just a month ago, DCA gave the county $2 million towards some vague unnamed program. I express concern with the county hiring freeze being in effect, that the county could be in financial difficulty. The county manager pointed out that I previously claimed the county was sitting on $150 million in cash. Contradictory evidence is starting to arise for sure that behind the scenes, this county could be a financial disaster in the making that is hidden from the public. Here's another resolution for $2 million for a project with, again, no specifics mentioned. Someone needs to explain what this project is, since basically all I ever hear is flippant and non-professional answers from the county manager during these meetings. General comments. You should be aware that in April, South Jersey Industries had broken ground for a $400 million biofuels plant at Tremely Point in Linden, just blocks away from our county's much smaller, struggling biofuels plant not yet built. This is like Walmart versus the mom-and-pop project. South Jersey Industries' plant will convert 1,500 tons of food waste to generate 3.8 billion BTUs a day of renewable natural gas, all based on their fully proven process already used at other locations, and to be operational at end of 2025. Our struggling county biosolids project was planned to do only 400 tons of food waste and 1 billion BTUs a day, one quarter of South Jersey's processing. But sadly, these numbers were based on an unproven commercialized process, which you should have been aware of from the start. Our failed project has been ongoing since 2019 with no results. It appears UCI Director and Finance Chair, who is being paid $300,000 a year, has put the county taxpayers in a precarious position to possibly accept a default on $95 million in county bonding. This, we cross our collective fingers, it doesn't happen. In the public's interest, we are imploring you to table this resolution, to stop throwing good money after bad. You must first call upon UCI Director Taylor to explain in writing why this project is taking more than five years to complete, and based on an unproven process, is now costing $95 million, with the taxpayers on the hook. Cash flow calculations previously now, done before, previously now, cannot pay it back. Will you please do your job, table this resolution, and get explanations from Bibby Taylor? Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting. I'd like to ask County Manager Omen to please comment on Resolutions 865, 869, 870, and 878.
Thank you, Chair. I could blow through a lot of these resolutions. I'll try not to be flippant, as Mr. Patterson claimed. Excuse me? Thank you. For the resolutions under finance, we accept the awards when we get notification from the state, and you cannot spend the money until you get notification. I figured Mr. Patterson would know that. For the Ares Project, which he's asked about several times, the county has no role in issuing the debt or paying the debt. This is a privately financed project. Green Lane, we, county does own a park there, a piece of land, it'll be a walking trail. Lease purchase resolution, that is a commonly used method across the state where you pool resources, so instead of one town buying a police car, one town buying another police car, you buy them in bulk. It saves all the towns and the taxpayers money. For the other item he was talking about, the waste, that is, again, not a county project. It is a private project. The private company is responsible for running the project, managing the project, paying the debt. I'm sure that's in your notes somewhere. Yeah, and that's about it. Answered all his questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. County Council Bruce Bergen, can you please comment on Resolution 875?
Thank you, Chair. This arises out of the county's ongoing litigation concerning the improperly constructed Ashbrook This law firm has been representing us to this point in that litigation, and this is to pay their bills, so we can continue to move forward and try to collect our money back from the contractors and others who did their jobs improperly. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. And as for our concerns regarding the Clark Reservoir, we do have a public hearing in Clark at the end of this month, so we can address those questions then. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2024-836 through 2024-890.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Granados and was seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Maribella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
Chairwoman Palmieri-Muddad?
Aye.
The record reflect, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all of the resolutions?
Thank you. At this time, I would like to call upon my colleagues for their reports and comments, and I will start with Commissioner Bodak.
The Union County Board of Commissioners announces the newest Art for All Abilities Session on Tuesday, November 26. The Arts for All Abilities Program helps children and adults with disabilities enjoy art. It gives them chances to express themselves, learn new skills, and connect with their communities. The November 26 session, Family Canvas Night, will be held at Warren Akle Park Center at One Park Drive in Roseville. Classes are free, but pre-registration is a requirement. Pre-register at ucnj.org. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Maribella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Union County Board of County Commissioners invites all dinosaur-obsessed children ages four and up to Trailside Nature and Science Center on November 16 to discover the fascinating world of these majestic creatures. Children will learn how to dig for fossils, feed a baby raptor, that's, I'm looking forward to that part, and take part in other exciting activities centered around dinosaurs. Tickets are $20 for Union County residents and $25 for out-of-county participants. Tickets are available for one of two sessions, 11:30 a.m. to 2:30, to 12:30, sorry, or 1:30 to 2:30. To purchase tickets, please visit ucnj.org/ticket. And before I conclude my comments, Madam Chair, I'd like to say a word and just thank the residents and the voting public of Union County for overwhelmingly supporting my reelection and the reelection of Chairwoman Palmieri-Muddad and Commissioner Baker. They obviously have weighed both candidates and decided we were doing a fine job for the residents of Union County, and I appreciate that support. I want to thank everyone who put their name on the ballot and ran for office. It's certainly not easy to do, and people want to put their name up and be evaluated for what they can or can't do for the county, and I'm just appreciative for the support I've received. And on behalf of my colleagues, I can say that I'm very, very thankful for that support over many, many elections and many years. I want to congratulate also our new Senator, Senator-elect Kim, our Congresspeople that were re-elected, both on the Republican side and the Democratic side, that represent Union County and do a great job in Congress for us, and all the local candidates who ran and won, and thank those who ran and did not win. But I, I'm just sitting here just very thankful for, you know, the outpouring and overwhelming support that we received, and I couldn't be more grateful. And thank you, Madam Chair, for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And by the way, Adeline keeps asking me if the dinosaurs are real. It's like, are they real? Are they going to be real? So that should be a fun event. Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd my congratulations to you and Commissioner Maribella and Commissioner Baker, and to all who participated in the election. Also, this past week, we observed Veterans Day, and most of us attended some sort of ceremony, and just want to add my thanks to all of the veterans and to all of our people currently actively serving in the military. And that is my, that's all I have to say for this time. I'll bank the rest. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Baker.
I'll just be brief and say that Commissioner Maribella expressed the same kinds of thoughts that I had regarding the election. I do want to congratulate my colleagues on winning another term as commissioners, and I think that's, I think that's about all I have to say right now. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Yes, I also offer congratulations to my colleagues on their success in this past election. Also, the Commissioner Board is hosting inclusive Zumba classes for children and adults on Thursdays in November in this month at the Cranford Community Center located at 220 Walnut Avenue. Union County residents ages 5 through 14 are scheduled for 5:30 to 6:15, and residents 15 and older have class from 6:30 to 7:15. Teens and adults ages 15 and older are also invited to participate in our inclusive ceramics painting at the Gregorio Center, 330 Helen Street in Linden, on Tuesday, November 19, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Registration for both events is required. Just go to ucn-
I'll, I'll just be brief and say that Commissioner Maribella expressed the same kinds of thoughts that I had regarding the, the election. I do want to congratulate my colleagues on, on winning another term as commissioners. And I think that's, I think that's about all I have to say right now. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Yes, I also offer congratulations to my colleagues on their success in this past election. Also, the, the Commission Board is hosting inclusive Zumba classes for children and adults on Thursdays in November in this month at the Cranford Community Center located at two-twenty Walnut Avenue. Union County residents ages five through fourteen are scheduled for five-thirty to six-fifteen, and residents fifteen and older have class from six-thirty to seven-fifteen. Teens and adults ages fifteen and older are also invited to participate in our inclusive ceramics painting at the Gregorio Center, three-thirty Helen Street in Linden on Tuesday, November nineteenth, from seven to eight P M. Registration for both events is required. Just go to ucnj.org to register. That's all I have. I wish everybody, you know, a happy week, happy holiday, as we seriously move into the next season. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to also congratulate colleagues on the Commissioner Board for, for the win that truly show the residents are in support of the work you guys are doing throughout our county. And also, I want to invite Union County residents with disabilities and special needs, along with their loved ones, to our annual skating with Santa event on Saturday, December fourteenth, from two P M. to four P M. at Warren Akle Sports Center in Roseville. This re-event is hosted by our Office for Persons with Disabilities and Special Needs, includes ice skating, crafts, photo booth, refreshments, holiday gifts for children twelve and under, courtesy of the Move New Jersey Forward Foundation. Registration is required. Visit www.ucnj.org backslash OPDSN-reg to sign up. We look forward to celebrating the season together, and I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. County Council Bergen?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing tonight.
County Manager Omen?
Nothing tonight, Chair.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Thank you, Chairwoman. The Union County Board of County Commissioners is welcoming all Union County residents to take part, part in the last scrap metal recycling drop-off for the twenty-twenty-four season on Saturday, November sixteenth, from nine a.m. to twelve P M., rain or shine. Residents from any Union County municipality can bring scrap metal to either of these two sites, Cranford at one-fifty-one Kennaworth Boulevard, or Rawway at Rawway River Park Service Yard. Materials should be placed in, in trunk, cargo area, or truck bed, and be accessible to staff to remove from vehicle. Pumpkin recycling continues throughout the month of November. For a list of pumpkin recycling locations, or a list of accepted scrap metals, please visit ucnj.org forward slash recycle. I want to congratulate my colleagues on winning this election and wishing everybody a happy, blessed Thanksgiving. Thank you. This is all from me.
Thank you. The Union County Board of County Commissioners is excited to launch the official Explore Union County app, available for free. As part of my twenty-twenty-four Growing Together in Union County initiatives, this app offers a comprehensive guide to our county parks, recreation listings, staff directories, helpful links, and featured events. It's your all-access pass, pass to discovering everything Union County has to offer right in your backyard. But this app isn't just about showcasing our great outdoors. It also strengthens communications between residents and the county. With the feedback feature, you can report issues directly to us by uploading photos and sharing your location for a seamless and efficient response. Please visit ucnj.org forward slash explore, or search Explore Union County on the App Store and Google Play today. We're very proud to bring our community closer, one experience at a time, and I'm very excited to officially announce the, the app that will now be available. We, earlier this month, we celebrated the, we did our Great Pumpkin Sale at Echo Lake, which is always a really wonderful family event. We have so many people that come back year after year and watch their pumpkins sail off in Echo Lake Pond, and it's just a really fun family event. So I want to thank our parks team for putting that together every year. We also celebrated Dewali on Sunday at the Hamilton Stage in Rawway. This was our fourth year celebrating, and the program gets better and better every year. The first year, we were reminded, we actually did it on Zoom, so that was crazy time to think about, but we, we each had gotten our, our candles, and we did a presentation through Zoom. And then, year after year, we have grown the program, but we had some really wonderful talent from Union County. It was all student performances from various groups throughout Union County. They were all Union County students, and they were really, really special. So I want to thank those that participated in that program for participating. And I also want to just make mention that tonight, we passed a resolution recognizing the bravery and sacrifice of our veterans who have served our, served and continue to serve our nation with dedication. Union County is grateful for your commitment and courage. I know we celebrated Veterans Day on Monday, but here in Union County, we celebrate our veterans every day, and we're so grateful for the sacrifices that they made and their families made for all of us. So with that, I also want to congratulate all of our Union County individuals who ran for office, whether they won or lost. It is not an easy task to put your name on a ballot, so I just want to congratulate those that went for it this year, and I want to thank the residents who supported myself and my colleagues, Commissioner Maribella and Commissioner Baker. It's a joy to run and serve with both of you. So with that, I will ask for a motion to close.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good night.[1784.73]